To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It's 11:30 Wednesday, February 22. This is a public notice was given, and the topics on this agenda are going to, on this special meeting, are going to include an executive session on number six, Agenda Item Six, and then number seven, administrative actions. For the record, County Council, there were two notations here that this was 24-hour notice. I personally have not had the time to thoroughly read all the information, and for the record, the notice was sent out yesterday morning at 11:35 a.m. So this is not 24-hour notice. This is not a legally, in my opinion, noticed meeting, and they don't split hairs, I think, as far as the minutes. It might as well be an hour as a minute, but it is not 24 hours' notice. So that said, we're still in, you know, a regular public session. Do you wish to continue as though it were regularly noticed or not on the subject?
Mr. Chair, I think the options for the board here are to, you know, cancel the meeting because of the lack of 24-hour-on-the-dot notice. But also, another option would be to continue with the meeting, and if someone wants to object to our actions and continuing, they would have the ability to do so in court and have a judge determine whether we had a lawfully noticed and conducted meeting or not. I think if we kept talking until 11:35, it would meet the 24 hours, and our arguments for success would be better, even though I like our chance of succeeding nevertheless. One thing I would like to mention to the board, and again, so it's a board decision if they want to continue, but I think our chances of prevailing in a suit on a violation of the public meetings law are good if we proceed.
Well, it is 11:35 now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Although, to me, that's not the point at all. Okay.
Well, it's one point.
Yes, but it's not a...
Right.
What I would deem a good point. I would not want to argue that.
Well, I think the point, okay, I hear what you're saying. I think the point of the law is to comply with the law, and then the remedy for noncompliance.
Correct.
And you consider, you know, whether, what the remedy is for what your actions are. So I think it's one way to look at it. But regardless, I understand what you're saying. I did see that it didn't get out until 11:35. Perhaps we would have had the option to send out another notice at 11:40 and call the meeting for 11:40. That could have made compliance. Once again, I think there's good arguments that we'd succeed if someone challenged the lawfulness of our conduct today.
What urgency is there in doing this so quickly? Because I say, you know, Commissioner Golds mentioned he hasn't read it thoroughly. I certainly haven't. I'm, I don't know, I can't speak for Commissioner Boyce, but what was the urgency for this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's a fair question. The urgency for this, and if you recall, so the Agenda items are an executive session and also then a public discussion. And this is about the Forest Lake matter with the weir and the enforcement actions in the lawsuit. We had an executive session on this matter last week.
Correct.
And the, I don't want to get into the, into the details of the executive session, but some of the, some information was lacking in that executive session for the board to come out of that executive session and make a decision. And so what I've tried to do is provide that information at this meeting and the, in these two meetings, and so then, or this meeting with the two items. And then the urgency is that we are in a pending lawsuit and a pending enforcement action, and there is a hearing scheduled in the Office of Administrative Hearings on the DSL's enforcement action against us for the county to represent whether we are going to proceed in opposing the enforcement action or not. And they'll, we'll need to represent to them whether we are or not. If I don't get alternative direction from the board today, then I would represent to the state that we will be proceeding to oppose the enforcement action. So that's the urgency, Mr. Chair.
Now, I had understood from, you know, not just the last executive session, but certainly in the last one, I don't think you mentioned, you know, there wasn't sufficient evidence in that session. I don't, I didn't go into that executive session seeing that there would be. My expectations, you know, given the complexity of this was not that there would necessarily be all the information, because every time we had an executive session, other things surfaced. I don't think it's, defies any, you know, rules to say necessarily that every time we, you know, actually, every time we went into an executive session, the price seemed to increase $100,000 at a pop on it, which boggles my, it boggled my mind then, it boggles it now, that we had asked, and I thought we had agreed from direction from the board also at that point, to go out and try, and not try, go out somewhere and get flow charts as far as all of the entities, we even had more entities. The numbers grew as far as the state and federal agencies involved in this thing during the last executive session. Also, I think it grew from, my recollection, five to six. But again, I'm going to speak for myself here, and one other point was my, as I recall also from that session, was that if, even if we did not make a decision at that time, we could, you know, and you were required because of this court hearing deadline, for lack of a more legal term, you know, to do that, that still didn't lock the county in, that we couldn't go back in the, you know, at a future point or in the near future if we did get enough information to make an intelligent decision and change that. So we weren't committing ourselves to a huge, long litigation procedure, you know, even if we didn't make that, that one deadline and you did have to go before the magistrate or whatever the proper terms are.
Mr. Chair, is this what we're supposed to be discussing in an executive session?
No, I don't think this conversation is necessarily...
I'm a little nervous.
Well, take a sip of water.
That's not very nice, sir.
But, oh, it was, it was nicer than...
I'm trying to protect you too.
Oh, excuse me, I'm, I'm still, you know, I haven't registered you to speak yet, please. But I'm not prepared to give a, again, I'm speaking for myself with what I have known, and I've, I've attended all, I'm the only one that has attended all of the executive sessions, because we had some, as I recall, went back to 2016. And I know the first executive session that was held in 2017, Commissioner Gold was unable to attend because she had other arrangements. So anyway, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's a big picture here, and by what you just outlined with the complexities of this, that makes it even more, in my opinion, wise to collect all the data we can, and we're sitting here today. There is an urgency, I think we're all aware of that, you know, to bog us down with five minutes. That's what, that's just what puts the belief of the public that we're still in a dysfunctional form, and we've learned some valuable lessons today. So I think we'll be on guard for this even more in the future, and I respect your concern to follow the letter. I think there's even the appearance here that the staff maybe dropped the ball for a few minutes or something like that, and I believe wholeheartedly that they are making every effort to follow through and really do a good job. I can comment more on that, but I think that's enough for now. Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a couple more comments. My main objective here is not to get bogged down with five minutes. I addressed that up front because it's an issue, okay, and it's a legitimate issue. My concern is that, given what I scanned through or gleaned through from this information, that I've not had a chance to thoroughly read, and we certainly haven't had a chance to discuss it, be it in open session or executive session, I am absolutely not prepared to make a decision today on this.
So are we expected to make a decision today?
Well, I think that's what I'm gathering, that that's the hope, or we go to the Plan B, you know, which is still viable. I think that County Council goes before the judge.
It's interesting, and I know the chair says that he doesn't have the information to absolutely make a decision one way or the other today. And the decision that you, that I would, that I would be looking for today would be whether to tell the Office of Administrative Hearing whether we are prepared to go forward with the opposition to the enforcement action at our telephone conference on Friday. So that, and so that's the direction I'm looking for, and because the prior board direction was to oppose the enforcement action, I would need board direction to change that. And so if I don't get that board direction today, I would tell the Office of Administrative Hearing that we still continue to oppose the enforcement action. That being said, the chair mentioned, and I believe it's correct, that here's what I think would happen if I tell the Office of Administrative Hearing that. They would say, fine, we will set this matter for a hearing, you know, in a month or something like that. And then we may have time to, we may have time to, you know, resolve it prior to the trial date. So there's still opportunities to resolve. But I think, I think the date of the administrative hearing will be pretty, pretty, probably, you know, I think a month or six weeks would be about as far out as we could expect. The information that I have for you today is a follow-up to some of the information lacking from the last meeting. It's estimates from our consultants on the costs, and one of the costs that's not there is cost of construction, and I've been informed that we can't get cost of construction until the design is complete, which is fairly reasonable, but there's ways to estimate cost of construction. So I think what the board would have today if we do proceed is a reasonable approximation of the cost to complete the project based on written documented quotes submitted by our water rights permitter, our construction contractor, and our environmental consultant. And that is what the board would have. What I would say, if we do get continued, I have asked for the timeline. The timeline was not provided. It would take coordination among the three different entities, the water rights provider, the environmental, and also the construction engineer. The issue with the timelines and with the estimates is, you know, that ultimately they will be just that. They'll be proposed timelines, estimates. So the question would be, once you're provided with those, and I know you won't be able to answer until you see them, but will that be sufficient if they give an estimate, or will there be more detail sought in the timeline or the estimate? And, you know, will we be able to accomplish that within, you know, the timeframe between going to enforcement? For me, if the board doesn't make a contrary decision, I need to prepare for the enforcement contest as well as the lawsuit contest, and that'll take a lot of resources from the legal department away from other things, and so it'll be quite a demand on my time. So that's, that's something that will be valuable as well. So that's just factors for the board to consider. It might make, it's one option again. We've tried in good faith to notice this meeting in a 24-hour per the law, and there's people here who apparently received the notice and are willing to hear some of the information. It might be that the board hears the information and decides what they want to do or not, but I think continuing it might make sense after you hear and consider the information presented today. But you could continue it without hearing the information as well, Mr. Chair. It's a board decision.
On some of the, you've addressed even more, and we talked, you know, going to go back to the executive session again, and I don't think, I have no problem making this statement either. We had talked about, which has clearly resulted in this notice and the attached document that went out to the public, about a lot more disclosure than had been the case previously. And we had talked in the executive session and you and I privately after that as far as the possibility, or certainly to consider disclosing the entire situation, okay? And I think there's, you know, I'm still a proponent of that based on what we've already gone through with these executive sessions, based on all the meetings that have been public with people, yourself included, going up to residents in the Forest Lake area. I think the sooner that could be done, and I think this was a good step here with, with all this, this financial information, and just your comments, your additional comments that the 100 and whatever thousand is not all of it, that didn't include any construction.
I think in this case, I did a construction estimate based on the soft costs and using some reasonable ratio of soft cost to hard costs in construction based on the size of this project and complexity of it. But at the same time, the reason that this information in particular has been made public, Mr. Chair, is because it anticipates a solution that would involve directly dealing with the citizens on the lake.
Which you already have been to a degree...
To a degree.
In the meetings.
And so, and so this, this would be more detailed, and the reason it was made public for not just those citizens, but for the rest of the public, is it involves some choices on financing, technically not legal choices, policy choices, so I think a fair discussion in public to talk about this. This particular choice of solution, the ins and outs of, you know, the lawsuits and things like that, we can talk in exec session or not. Executive session is a, they're, they're optional...
Correct.
...in most instances. So that's, you know, that's, that's the long and the short of it there, and thanks for saying this is a good start, but I...
I think it is.
I felt, I felt with what we're trying to do here, in particular with the idea of a reimbursement district involving citizens, I think putting that information public made the most sense at this point. And then I think there are some citizens here who would be willing to talk on that topic if that would help inform the board's decision, not requiring the board to make a decision today if they're not comfortable, but at the same time, getting information, you know, while people are here, some have come, I think, from North County or the Lang Luce area. So that's, that's also a board decision.
I'm forgetting more information. I'm not for making, to speak for myself, a decision today. I'm for getting more information, I think, given the scenario, the time scenario, including the flow charts and the timelines, because we're talking, we were talking years, multiple years, probably. I'm for more, I'm for less at this point, executive session talk and more talk just like we have here on the general topic. And again, I'm speaking for myself, not for the other two commissioners. But I would, I would hope that, or certainly be amenable in this meeting to, with the idea that probably you can still go before the court, magistrate, or whatever the technical term is, and I don't like to use the word "by time," but by doing so, you are basically provided additional time that the court will set for a future date. That gives us, I think, there's a lot of things we can do in a month or six weeks at this point based on what we do know and where we, where we are right now.
Could you get a continuance going to the court?
We've, we've had a few continuations already. Madam Vice Chair, because of obtaining the experts, obtaining the information, meeting with the board, so I, I don't know that we could get another continuance. And if, if the Office of Administrative Hearing sets a hearing date, I will be dedicating, you know, my time to preparing for the hearing, because I still, that's been the past direction of the board, and I, that's, that's what I feel I need to do if that's what we're going to do. So, and it will be, you know, a considerable amount of time. So I wouldn't want to represent to the Office of Administrative Hearings that I'm prepared to go forward without then preparing to go forward. So I would, I would act on that, and I wouldn't just say that to "by time," I would say it to prepare to go forward. It's a board decision at any point between then and the date of the hearing whether to change direction.
To change, which we still legitimately, with more, more known information, could.
Sure. You know, and that's, that's a, I'd call it a truism. Anytime you're in an adversarial proceeding, you always have the option to try to discuss settlement prior to the date of the hearing, at the date of the hearing. There's a proverbial settlement on the courthouse steps, you know, there's plenty of things that happen in legal proceedings. So that's, those are, those are options.
So question, if we were to get information, and I like the idea of getting more information, could we hold a special meeting next week, say, to come up with a decision?
Be difficult, but, but yes, I mean, we have the laws on special meeting is 24-hour notice, and we could do that. What I've heard from the board today is that the 24-hour notice was, you know, not the favored, because it doesn't give the time that the board likes to review the information. What I have heard, hearing from the chair, I think some of the options for the board today would be, one, continue the exec session to another time, and talk about this information, maybe hear from some of the folks who've come down about how they feel about some of the ideas in here, primarily the, the improvement district idea to fund some of the expenses. And then talk about, I can get at least you started on some of what the expenses are, and they may have some timelines in them. So I think that's an option, and then we can, you know, continue the executive session, go right to the second Agenda item, and present some information, hear from some folks, and then I'll tell the board, the Office of Administrative Hearings that I am still opposing the enforcement action, and I'll prepare for that. I've done a significant amount of preparation so far, and it'll take some more, but, and I feel like we have good-fate arguments to make in, in that process. So I'm, I'm prepared.
Can we keep this more open versus closed?
What I would prefer on that, Mr. Chair, is that the board just meet in executive session and then come out and then decide if they want to, you know, what, there may be, Mr. Chair, some things in executive session that, you know, would nevertheless be inappropriate for public disclosure, but the executive session law allows the board to say what of executive session does come out and doesn't. So I would, I would prefer, if that's something the board wants to consider, that I, that I review all the prior executive sessions and give recommendations to the board in executive session what could and couldn't come out.
Are you talking a future, are you talking a future executive session?
Right, because I'm not, I'm not prepared to go through that today.
Okay, not talking today.
Right, and that's where I'm saying, continue the exec session, just talk about these public items of, basically funding options is really what this memo is primarily about, Mr. Chair.
Correct. So just defer this, this executive session.
Yeah, to continue it, and then we just move on to the second Agenda item.
Continue, we'll keep this open.
So we'll just take a motion to continue the executive session, and then we then move into this item, and I would have a couple of items probably before that, just for the board about meeting scheduling that's come up, and I think it'd be a good opportunity. It's a, that's a small matter, the law still allows us to talk about other items, not an Agenda. And I think we, there's some urgency in those items, we're talking about the first and the second meeting in March, and we just don't have a lot of time otherwise to talk about those, because I think today's the deadline for the first meeting.
Mr. Chair, okay. Okay, are you, Commissioners, okay with that?
Yes, just a quick comment before we have a motion.
Commissioner Boyce.
Thanks for staying engaged. This has been very productive. This is a very, very, it's a big mountain to climb, and the challenges of this, Commissioner, or excuse me, Council Huddle, I think you have done very well, and I appreciate it. And your comment, Mr. Huxley, about a little extra time, I thought that was right on, and thank you for that as well, so I can offer a motion that we go into executive session.
No, we're not going to do that. We're just going to get invitation from the...
Well, it says, the suggestion was a motion to continue exec session, but he's made a motion to go into exec session. Is there a second on that?
Okay, that dies for lack of a second.
Okay.
Is there a motion to continue the executive session?
I move that we continue the executive session.
I thought that was my motion.
Oh, I thought you said "go into."
No, you said "go into."
Okay, I'll phrase it better next time. Second.
Okay. Okay, call for the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're going to continue to a future date, the executive session.
Get these words right.
So, Mr. Chair...
So County Council?
Thank you. The two items I had on scheduling came up. Our next meeting is March 1st, but there's also been a notice, a broad notice about a FEMA workshop on March 1st.
Yes.
And the FEMA workshop, I believe, will be occurring from 12 noon to 3:00 or 3:30 in the afternoon.
I think it starts later...
I think it started at 3, I thought.
2 o'clock, I think. We were trying to get some window in between there in our discussions.
Let me take a look at my, I have the document somewhere here. I think we technically received the, we received the notice because we're in the flood zone that FEMA will be talking about.
I thought it was...
What time is it? 1:30 to 3:30?
Yeah, I thought it, yeah, 1:30 or 2, was it 1:30 or 2? 1:30?
So that...
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, 1:30 to 3:30. Thank you. So the, the idea would be that our March 1st meeting would either be complete by 1:30...
No, 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 complete by 12.
Thank you, complete by 12. And then, but at least if not, that we would need some level of a recess from the hours of 1:30 to 3:30 to accommodate the FEMA meeting on that very, on that same day. So it's just a notice that the March 1st meeting, if it's not complete within, within the time, maybe end up being continued or recessed. The next item was the March 8th meeting. I received communication from Commissioner Boyce that he's going, he's got subpoenaed to be a witness at a trial in Marion County. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then I'd also see some other information that another commissioner won't be here on March 8th. I think, Mr. Chair, were you?
Correct.
So the question would be, and, and that's just a work session day, so it, I think we could just do away with the work session on that day.
Not schedule a work session.
And if there is one, and we'll, so that's, those were the two items I had. Is that acceptable to the board that we just not do a work session on the 8th of March? There was an idea...
Well, there wouldn't be a quorum to listen to it.
We don't, we don't need a quorum to do a work session, because you don't do business, but it was just as a courtesy to the members, you know, the idea of the work session, get information, and if you're not here, I think just cancel the work session on the 8th.
I think we should cancel.
But you just consensus would suffice.
I think consensus, just kind of...
Agreed.
Thank you.
I agree.
Okay, we have consensus.
Well, thanks very much. So then I...
Can I say one more thing on the meeting?
Yes, of course.
Maybe we could say we could go till 12:30, so the FEMA session's at 1:30. That would give an hour lunch.
In case we need to go over, that's a good idea.
Okay. Well, we'll, staff will make efforts when we're putting the agenda together to...
You know how I love meetings.
Very good. So, thank you. That's, that's all I had on those two items, and I'll get started on the document. So the document starts out with three options. The three options are to, one, one option we have is to not contest the consent decree... we have is to not contest the consent decree. That would result in, and we're not asking for decisions on these, this is just by way of background, so the, that would result in, if we don't contest the consent decree, we do what they say, which is remove the rocks and logs. And then the water flows from Floris Lake, as it did last summer when we got, when we received the calls of complaints. So that's one option. Removing the rocks and logs now, however, does not preclude, in my opinion, barring some other circumstance, proceeding with option three, which is seeking permits. We could, we wouldn't need to enter a consent decree at that time, but we could nevertheless, for instance, if we said, okay, we did something without permits now, we're going to undo it and walk away, that doesn't mean we can't come back and say, okay, we have this idea and we want to do these permits. So that, those are kind of the options, to comply, remove things, and then get permits or not. And then the other one is to contest the action, and this is where our action is technically against one of the several agencies, it's against the, excuse me, it's against the Department of State Lands. And they have this thing called removal fill, which is if you want to take anything out of or place anything into the waters of the state, you need a permit from the Department of State Lands. They're saying we didn't do that, we're saying that we fell, we had permission, and we also fell within a statutory exception. And that's the basis of those two items, and we have, I think, very good arguments there. And notwithstanding that, I'm not going to say we have a greater than 50% chance of prevailing, because anytime in my, anytime you say that you're going to win, you know, that's, that's not the best way to do it. But we have, we have really good arguments to make, and I'm, I'm prepared to make those. The issue with that is it's only one of the agencies, and one of the things that's happening out there is, that's the removal fill law, the Department of State Lands administers removal fill law. If, if we did put a, or want to put an empowerment in there, and, and I think there has been some direction, or at least certainly some sentiment, that we should have an empowerment there, that an empowerment should be there to maintain historic levels for both our improvements on the lake and use of the lake, and the, and the resource as recreation. To do that, we would need, we would need to obtain permits from the Department of Water Resources, which governs water rights and authority to, to impound waters. We also have arguments that we are, we are grandfathered in there, and the information is that the, the prior installation is, again, vested. So, and that we could make the same installation, which again is going back to the arguments, and that that would apply to the other agencies who regulate the, the situation out there. We also, though, are in a case with the United States Army Corps of Engineer, who is the federal counterpart to the Department of State Lands for the most part, and they also regulate placing items in waters. And then there's other agencies, there's NOAA and the NIMPs, National Marine Fisheries, they regulate whether you do something that affects fish, and so does the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. So for instance, if we prevail against the Department of State Lands, and we are within the exceptions that we say we are, then, and we prevail against the Department of Water Resources, and say we have a vested right to impound this water, some of these natural reas, these species agencies, or the agencies that care about the, the other biological elements, could say, well, nevertheless, that's not us, and you still need a permit from us, because, you know, you're, you're impounding fish passage and those type of things. So, so then we would, and I, and I think the signals are fairly clear that those agencies are interested in those kind of activities out there. So if we do want to go forward, we're looking at an expense, and we're looking at dealing with multiple agencies. So what I've done is, on page two of the memorandum, talk about the costs of what those would be. The costs are outlined in the attachments, but a summary of the costs, our water rights consultant said it would take them $10,000 to perform the work up to submittal of a water right permit application. And that's to the Oregon Department of Water Resources. The Oregon Department of Water Resources requires a sign-off from the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife that the impoundment that gives us the water right allows for what they call fish passage. And so the way the consultants work, one consultant knows the legal ins and outs of water rights, and when you're entitled to a water right permit. Another consultant knows the legal ins and outs of, for lack of a better word, I'll say, laws like the Endangered Species Act, and the species laws, and not just animals, but also plants and other, other species. And not just fish, but other species as well. So those, that's the biological environmental permitting component, and they've estimated $46,000 for that. And then the engineering firm, so then neither of those two firms builds any things or designs anything, they just consult on the designing and the building. And so then the engineering firm estimates roughly $30,000 to design the structure, including consultation, because they're going to be the ones who would be putting in the component into the structure that would allow for the appropriate fish passage while holding the water back. So then the total of those estimates is $86,668, and the estimates include some assumptions, I think with the caveat or explanation that additional cost may be incurred. There is also no estimate for construction, because the design isn't final, they can't give a construction estimate until the design is final. I've asked them about that, we have a fairly simple situation, there's a width and a height known, and I think a footprint, and some of these features, I have to believe, have been imposed elsewhere, but they're still not comfortable giving a construction estimate. What I have heard, though, is that in that industry, you can have ratios of what they call soft cost to hard cost. If your design costs are this much, you can estimate what your construction cost would be.
May I interrupt just for a question, please? Would you give just, for, I guess more for the record, you know, an est- estimated size, this is not like we're talking a huge towering-
Not like war of-
Anything, you know, this is, this is a, of what this, this weir-
Well, if I had to say, it, it's probably the width of the room here from side to side, and the height of a chair seat, perhaps, maybe a chair seat and a half, would be what I would say. So Jay Tross is here, I think he knows the dimensions as well as anyone.
Forty-two feet.
For, just for the record?
Jay Tross, Juvenile Parks Director. Forty-two feet from bank to bank, and approximately two, two and a half feet.
So I think I, if I know how big 42 feet is, it's probably wider than this room, this might be more like 24, 30 or something. So, so it's, it's about a room and a half wide, and then again, not much taller than the seat of a chair, maybe a little taller. So yes, it, it, it seems like a great, a great deal. I've had some feedback from other people, one being a person who received the memorandum, who provided some additional information on fish ladders and fish passage elements that have been used successfully elsewhere. I can pass those on to the consultants. So-
Were those ideas less expensive than some of these, or more cost-effective, I should say?
The funny part is, the idea was particularly related, it was a, it was a prefabricated fish ladder, or a custom fabricated fish ladder by a company that specializes in making fish ladders to assure, you know, fish passage and compliance. Some of these laws are federal, so they apply nationwide. So that would be one component of the-
Right.
-design and construction.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyce?
Council Huddle, is there a guarantee that that new fish ladder engineered properly would work? And also, correct me if I'm wrong, this weir has been in here for 40 years, and has been very effective. Fair enough?
Well, again, very effective is a relative term, I think, Mr. Commissioner, but it has been in for 40 years, and it's my understanding there have been no complaints or violations against the county or anyone else for all of these federal acts. So I, I think that rec, I, I, to say whether it's been effective or not, that's a conclusion, but there's no record of complaints of any violations of any of these laws up till this last summer.
Was that because this dam was unknown to the various agencies? That there were no complaints?
I think not, I think we actually have photographs of some of the agencies working in close proximity to this dam. The dam can be seen from Google satellite images, Google Earth or something, so, no, I believe the, the pre-existing weir has been well-known, and also, my understanding is that it was, you know, in the old days, back in the 70s, that the agencies were aware of it and said it would be okay, but there's no, we, I don't think they-
Don't have a written record.
If there was a detriment to fish pass, fish passage, they would have been greatly involved way before now.
Again, that's a, that's a position to take, but the, the thing about it is, there's just no, no record that there was, there is any agency action on this, on this structure in the 70 years that it existed.
Just kind of my point, thank you.
That's about the only thing I would say, the conclusions I'd let other people draw. Is there anything else, Mr. Chair, was that one of the things you wanted to talk about?
They didn't ever interview any of the fish families to see?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair. Okay, so, away we go, those were, those are the estimates through design. What I did with that figure, with the 30,000 design figure, I doubled that, using the soft cost being basically a third of the construction costs, of the overall project cost. I've seen ratios in other projects where it can be as low as 12%, which the lower the design cost is of the overall project, the higher the overall project is. So I used a multiplier that the construction cost would be twice the design cost. It's possible, Mr. Chair, with, as we described, it could be less. I just don't have anything from the construction outfit to go otherwise, so it's an estimate. And then I asked the road department what a reasonable contingency would be to put into a project, and he said on ODOT projects, 20% is a reasonable contingency, so I added that in there. And I know, Mr. Chair, I've been one of the persons who's communicated to the board a $200,000 and $300,000 cost to this. Based on the available figures that we have here, I've got it roughed out at $180,000, which is still considerable, I think. And then I continue, the county does not have 180, if, the idea is if we were to agree to a consent decree, we'd be committing then to contract with these professionals for $180,000 to obtain the solution. We don't have it, so then where could the money come from? I grudgingly said a loan from another fund, I said perhaps contingency dollars, or a loan from the road fund. I know the road fund has been a target, and, and it's probably not a popular option, but a loan from either fund, I think contingency we wouldn't need to replenish, but loans from low, road fund need to be replenished, so then, and they have a 10-year under the statutes to replenish funds, loans from other funds, and I've set up that statute.
Do we have to pay interest to the road fund?
If we set up interest, we would. Sometimes the interest that is established in these funds, I think, when we've talked about the funds, I think the, the board's aware that when we invest our own money, we are, we receive a very low rate of interest. I know the county accountant is here, but I think the rate of return on public funds investment, they have a very conservative, there's a statute that allows you what to invest in, and it's very low, so I, I think below 1%, maybe, maybe more. If Louise wants to talk, she can, I might ask her to, but you can correct me if I'm giving bad information.
It's finally gone over 1, but it's, you know, I mean, it's non-risk, it's not risky.
Right, exactly, and so I think if we, if we put a similar rate on that, we could, we could likely go more, but I think if you went too much more, there'd be some questions, so.
Louise calls from, county accountant. The investment, the, the county's main investment vehicle is a local government investment pool, and although they are much higher than a savings account rate from a bank, they are fairly low right now. I've seen them up to 5, 8%.
Oh.
But that was back before the recession, and, but right now, I believe that they're just around 1%, just above.
I had a- A tad over 1.
-looked at it for a while, because the treasurer, county treasurer gets those LGPI reports, but from what I remember, we were somewhere just around 1% the last time I got LGIP reports, so.
And so the answer technically is yes, we could charge interest on the loan and have it be paid back with interest to ourselves, but I think we'd have to, I don't want to say mirror, but I think we'd have to have some kind of a like kind of return as to what our investment vehicle is now.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And we would be charging ourselves, which is the other part about that. So then I proposed a plan to replenish the fund with a mechanism called a local improvement district under the statute, it's also can, can be called a reimbursement district under the statutes. And under the laws for counties, it says when a county governing body orders the construction of local improvement and levies an assessment for all their part, if there's a conflict between ORS 223, which is the state statutes for local improvement districts, and a county charter ordinance, or another statute, the charter ordinance or statute shall prevail. So we would follow the, the statutes. So the, or the, the ordinance would prevail over the statutes. And so then what I did, I looked at the county GIS map, because that's how these local improvement districts are usually made. You, you have the location of where your improvement is, and usually there's some kind of a, a radius area, and it's, the idea is that the properties in the improvement district would be receiving a special benefit from the improvement. What does that mean? Well, certainly in this case, the, the construction would maintain the historic lake levels, so people with lake frontage would continue to use their docks and things like that, and, and they would be able to draw the water that, you know, they've been able to draw without extending their pipes further and any other actions. So it certainly makes sense that properties right on the lakefront would receive a special benefit, and we could assess them. But also, I think a lake of this size and nature also benefits, I, I think there's a neighborhood around that lake, as it were, there's a, if you look at the GIS map, you'll see there's, you know, a, a cluster of houses in the vicinity of the lake, so I think those would certainly constitute properties that we could assess using the special benefit doctrine under the local improvement district mechanism. So, and-
I have one question, County-
Yes, Commissioner, go ahead.
Before you could assess all of these individuals, would you have to take it to a vote of the community?
Thank you. The local improvement district, because it's based on a special benefit, it allows the county to adopt this by ordinance, but there's a process for the adoption typically, which is, and I've seen it as a two-stage process, where you come up with your estimate, and before you, before you commence a construction and say, we are going to consider forming this local improvement district, we're going to include these properties, the properties would pay based on this formula, closest to the lake, and a ring or two out, you know, and then also the formula would be if you're, if you're right on the lake, would you pay by linear footage of lake frontage, lot size, something like that. So there's a couple of variables in the formula, and you notice the people who you intend to assess, and there's a public hearing on it, and they come and say why they should or shouldn't be included, and what they think is an alternative to, to that, and those kind of things. Part of what we've done between last meeting and today is talk to some of the folks in the area, and part of the, we, we sent this information out to them to get their feedback on it. It was, as you know, short notice, but some of them have made the trip down here to tell you whether they think it makes sense, just in a big picture. No one's going to commit to a number, we can't provide them with a number, but I gave you a hypothetical in here. you a hypothetical in here. If we had, you know, seventy-five-- the county owns a significant amount of land on the lakefront, so we would be part of the entities or people being specially benefited by this construction. So, assuming that the district had seventy-five properties, and I have-- I think the numbers will be different from this, but I just use this for math. Seventy-five properties, twenty-five of which are county-owned, so that's a third. The county would need to replenish, you know, a third of the funds, and I say the road funds, but it could be contingency. We may not have to replenish contingency, but we'd have to allocate it some other way. I don't know if you borrow from contingency. I'd ask-- maybe Louise could tell me. But regardless, if we wanted to, we would do that. And then the remaining one hundred and thirty-four divided by fifty properties left would represent roughly twenty-six eighty per property. I didn't include any interest on these calculations, so they're just-- they're of low value, they're only for illustration purposes.
Can I just do a math thing? I'm going to enter--
Go ahead. Sure.
You have a total of a hundred properties here, right?
No, I had a total of seventy-five, twenty-five of which are county-owned.
Okay.
So that, after you take out the twenty-five county-owned--
Changes the math, okay. No problem.
Sure. Well--
I was looking at twenty-five percent, seventy-five percent, and I thought--
Very good. No, that's why we do this, to have questions.
We'd love to have you teach us some math.
All right, what's your profession? Oh, shut up.
She did not prepare--
Who you teach math?
She did not prepare these materials, and she did not have a lot of time to review them, so I think her question is perfectly appropriate. So, spread over ten years, again, it would be-- so if you had twenty-six eighty per property out of-- if we had fifty properties, that's a pretty large number. I don't know if we'd get that many, but it just shows you if we had fewer, the number per property would go up. And then you divide that per ten years, two sixty-eight a year, and then you divide that by twelve months, twenty-three dollars a month. Now, again, this is only for illustration. It's likely, I don't-- fifty properties may be ambitious, but again, when I looked at some of the GIS maps, there are a number of properties out there. So, it's possible. I don't know. And then, we would probably charge interest. So, again, essentially, the idea is when you spread payments over time and divide them among a large population, it helps spread it, but the idea is to give a special benefit onto the particular properties. So then, I roughly go through what this-- we would need to create our own ordinance for establishing a local improvement district. The ordinance typically includes these type of steps. It would describe an estimate of costs. We mail and provide public notice of a hearing on the proposed district. The public and persons in the district give testimony. The board adopts a proposed assessment, you know, again, or not. And then affected persons can actually appeal the process, and the process can either move forward or repeat. And ultimately, the projects undertaken, again, there's always or nots in this, we cannot do this as well. And then if undertaken, the costs are determined, and we have another, and that can be years, you know, and I think we're looking at maybe a couple of years after the initial proposed assessment, then when you have your final cost, you do the same thing now with the final cost, and you do another round of notices and hearings for the final assessment, and then you put the assessment on the property. So, we would need to adopt it. So that's really the funding options. I'm not prepared to go through every page of these estimates, I just look to the bottom line on them. They may give, in a narrative form, Mr. Chair, some of the ideas of flow chart and timelines that you were looking for. I think they said we may get a timeline forthcoming, they couldn't make this meeting. I'll give that information to the board as soon as I get it. But that's really, I didn't have any real reason to doubt their costs. And then the other thing is, I think I said in here, the seeking out of grants would be ongoing. That's on page three as another option for funding. And I will say this, Commissioner Smith, or, sorry, he's now a representative, a state representative, he has submitted some draft legislation that would allocate some state money to assist us in the effort of financing this. He has asked for two-hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the state budget to help Curry County with this project. So, if that was successful, we may, we may not need to do the reimbursement district. There's a lot of options there. So, I have heard that our state is in pretty dire financial straits, so--
Don't count off.
I don't ever want to underestimate former Commissioner Smith, Representative Smith, but I, from what I've-- and I don't have any crystal balls, but from what I've seen, I think that's a long shot, so. But again, I would never underestimate Commissioner Smith there, or, excuse me, Representative Smith. And really, that's all I had. I think, to be honest with you, a detailed discussion of the estimates and things might make sense off the record in a one-on-one meeting, and maybe even a phone call with some of these fellows, so that's all I had. But if you wanted to hear from anyone who is here about any questions on these proposals, I see a number of folks here, and, oh, you have some--
Oh, yeah, we had some speaker slips.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
And anyone else who would like to speak, we would like to hear from you. There were two speaker slips here. Would anybody else that didn't fill one out like to? All you need to do is basically put the date, your name, and the subject matter.
I know, I'd definitely like to hear from some of the folks that are impacted.
Why don't we start? The first one that had put in a speaker slip is Mike. Is it Nibbs?
It is, yes.
Want to come on up, Mike, and just introduce yourself for the record and--
Well, I'm Mike Nibbs, I'm one of the residents out at Floris Lake. First of all, I'd like to thank John and Jay for keeping us in the communication loop. They've been diligent in at least letting us know what's going on. We don't see what happens in the closed sessions, and it just disappears into a black hole. I know from past experience that communication is one of these things where you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't. So, I appreciate that this might be half-baked at the moment, and it was short notice for all of us to actually read it and digest it. I had the same feeling that there's more questions and answers raised by putting that document out, but at least it sets a stake in the ground for conversation, I guess. So, you know, thanks for putting that out. I have some comments and I have some questions, I think. First of all, as an old software engineer and project manager, I get nervous about any form of estimating at this form of a project when we really don't have requirements, nor, to me, is it clear who's driving requirements. And I see project costs escalate in the following fashion: from requirements to design, a missed requirement can result in a big increase in design cost. A bad design ends up with a bad build, and after the build, if any one of those things is incorrect, people are second-guessing and costs escalate. So I'm really keen to see that we have control on the requirements, or we're not. I think you, Mr. Chairman, raised the point of we building Hoover Dam here. You know, it's been maintained as either a bunch of logs in the river, or a bunch of rocks in the river maintaining water levels for some time. I'm saying that's the right answer going forward, but I just don't want to engineer, over-engineer this thing. And I'm also concerned, who is actually signing off on the requirements and design phase of this? And are they going to second-guess us after the fact if they're not involved in the first place? So that's input to you guys, kind of, to take forward and ensure that we kind of have the process down going forward, we're not going to be surprised by cost. I was staggered by the cost, based on kind of what it's taken to maintain a similar structure over the years. It seems like, you know, it's kind of running away from us, and I think I had a sidebar with Mr. Huddle this morning saying we were surprised by cost. That said, you know, if we, if this ends up being on a subset, however, of taxpayers to actually help fund this thing, I'm even more keen to control costs than you might be if it's spread over the larger community. And that's probably my second list of things to talk about, is kind of the who pays and how. You know, it's, I will declare self-interest in this. I have lakefront property, and I would like to help subsidize this to come out with the right solution and maintain a healthy lake there from a property investment standpoint. However, you know, I'm on fixed income, as are many of the people out there, and it's not an unlimited bucket of money. That said, it's going to be very problematic, I think. I've been in lots of situations where you're trying to produce common funding for a set of requirements with disparate interests. And, you know, you'll have one level of interest from people who use the lake at a recreational level but do not live on the lake and live back from the lake. You'll have other people who live on the lake but really don't care from a financial standpoint if lake levels drop two feet and all the fish die, and everything in between. And it's going to be an interesting battle to push this through any kind of vote. And, you know, who gets the vote, I guess, is the other question. So, I'm rambling a little bit, but I think, you know, recognizing that there is recreational use of this lake that is not represented in this funding in any noticeable way is a concern of mine, because that is primarily where the, you know, the summer traffic comes from into that area. It's not just the people who live there, but it's the recreational users of the lake that benefit from it.
I think, just a quick comment, Mike, to your, on your timeline and the reason that I've, because I've run a lot of projects.
Right.
And we've seen some results of what happens when you don't know, and it's not documented before the fact with a, call it a critical path, call it a Gantt chart, call it whatever you want to--
Yeah, critical path analysis, yeah.
--timeline with who is responsible for what.
Right.
What the buy-off points are before you go from A to B to C to D.
Yep.
And if you don't have that, it's almost, in my opinion, guaranteed that there will be major problems at the end.
Never seen it end well.
No, never. I've never seen one end well.
Okay.
So, I think that's another reason for why I think it's so important for whatever turn we want to put on it, but to see a graphical overview in relation to time, how many different bureaucracies are involved.
Yeah.
When they, the buy-off is from them, can the next one proceed and so forth, and what are the costs associated with each one?
Yeah, I'm starting to understand some of the complexities. You know, when I was listening to the permit process and, you know, who signs off on water and then who signs off on fishing game, where's their input to the design, and who's signing off on that? You know, who signs off on requirements and who signs off on design, I think will protect us from the cost escalation, and at least make sure that we've got all of the actors identified early enough in the project.
Agreed.
So, I've got one last question for you. Would you think it would be a good idea for us to maybe do some sort of an assessment on the users of the lake, the recreational users, and then put that in some kind of a--
If possible, I have no idea how you do that, but--
Well, I don't, I don't know how they're charged right now, or if they're charged. I have no idea.
Easy to identify, but tough to engage, I think, probably.
I think so, too. And I'm one of the recreational users as well, so I'll probably end up paid twice.
Ah, okay. Okay, you're on the record now.
And I thought Mr. Nibbs was talking about the campers who use the park facility, and on page three, I mentioned one possibility, could be a special construction assessment on the Boyce Cove Park use fees to recover the county share of the expense. So, that's, again, there are options, and I think setting fees is a board prerogative, and I don't know that there's, you know, a lot of limitations on that, other than kind of maybe market forces.
Yeah, I just think we need to make it as equitable as possible.
Okay.
There was one that came in here, is it Sharon, is it Jensen? Are you living, are you up in the Floris Lake area?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I'm going to put you ahead of one of the others, who I know is not. Please.
Thank you. Again, Sharon Jensen. And I live at Floris Lake, but not on the lake. But actually, I think Mike Nibbs did a great job in explaining the whole situation from our perspective, and I'm really glad that you brought up the other users, because it's not just those of us who live there, and, excuse me, have some thing going on. But some people use it more than others. You'd have to put a gate probably at the, on the bridge, in order to catch all the other people that use it, that just come, as opposed to using the campground. So there are a lot of, there's a lot of unknowns in this. You know, there's the camp, there, excuse me, there are campers who you could probably assess, then there are the people who just drive in, you know, and who park around and then go over the bridge, and then use the lake that way. You know, the easiest people to assess would be the homeowners, because we live there. But I think you're going to have a challenge trying to get everybody to agree. Now, if you can do it by ordinance, then you don't have to have that agreement, but then you're going to have some other issues with, you know, people showing up in your boardroom. I mean, that's just, that's just, I mean--
You're kind of used to that.
That's the nature of it. That's just the nature--
Then we'll have an executive session.
Yeah, well, you can have an executive session. But, speaking only for myself, I cannot, can't speak for my husband, on its face, I kind of like the idea. But the devil's in the detail, and so, and I don't have the documents in front of me. But we're not a, we love the lake, we're really happy to be there, we feel this is a really special place, and so we're willing to do our part, whatever that would take, within reason. You know, so, you know, for what that's worth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The third speaker here was Carl King.
Carl King, to think of each, I am a member of your budget committee. And, other than County Council and the chairman, the rest, others of you weren't here last year when we went through the budget process. We started with a budget, and it was my first year officially on the budget committee, so I spent more time. And I went through all of the department budgets and took out and calculated the total amount of funds that were budgeted for other materials and services unspecified. And, for example, some budgets, like most of the elected officials, that amount of money in their materials and services budget was two percent of the total. So it looked like what you would think. It was a reasonable amount of money to put in a budget, that there may be something you need to spend for materials or services, you don't know. There were others that had much larger numbers, and most of them were central services under the control of the Board of Commissioners. But those budgets were different in another way. They also, in addition to having a larger amount of money set aside for unspecified materials and services, they also had a contingency in their budget. And then you got to the end of the whole budget, and there was another contingency number in six figures. When the budget process started, those numbers, and I left the road fund out, because you can understand the road fund needing contingencies in Curry County, I think it added up to five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And while we went through the budget, I was able, with other help from commissioners, to remove some of that, but not all of it. So my suggestion to you is, and during that process, we never got any accounting from the departments as to how they had spent that money in the past, with one exception. The Board of Commissioners' office fund was able to tell us how they spent their other materials and services. They spent it on bottled water. So I suggest to you that the road fund is not the place to look to fund this project. The road, the place to look is at these, you could call them slush funds, but these unallocated funds scattered throughout the budget. And the first, you know, as we're starting the process, hopefully, the county budget agent, when she meets with the various departments, will ask them, "How did you, did you spend any of that money this year, or last year, or the year before?" And we can probably find a couple hundred thousand dollars to take care of the problem at Floris Lake, which we do need, we have a, as a government, we have an obligation to take care of a problem that we may have caused. And I think we should fund it, but I don't think it's a good bet to look at the budget committee, funding it out of the road fund this year. Thank you.
I've been bringing my own bottled water.
Hey, Carl, I have one question. When you talk about getting it out of the quote "slush funds," are you speaking about the whole project, or just the county's portion?
Well, I think that's, you know, I don't know how, you know, these, the contractors and consultants aren't going to take their money out over ten years.
Oh, no, we've got to come up with the--
We got to pay that upfront. And how you deal with-- We got to pay that upfront. And how you deal with the homeowners is another question.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, as, as, that's a policy issue that I don't have to, it's above my pay grade as a budget committee member. But, you know, I, I seriously think we, we need to, we need to look very, you know, we all know we're going to have a tough time this budget season. And, you know, we just can't solve all of our problems by telling Doug that when he gets a slide in two or three years, he's got to go out with picks and shovels and local employees and take it off the road as opposed to do it the right way.
Point well taken.
Thank you, Carl. And we did, I think, you know, we, we worked closely on that, and it was good that that subject was brought up, you know, initially by you last year, and I think you made a pretty good dent in some of the contingencies as far as moving them out into other, other areas. Would anybody else like to, in the audience, make any comments? Or, I see a smile back there, but no? Okay. County Council, do you have any more comments?
Well, thanks, Mr. Chair. I did, and it, it kind of goes back to what we talked about earlier in the meeting, as far as the deadline and my communication with the Office of Administrative Hearing and my activities over in the circuit court across the street. And I, I know you don't speak for the whole board, and I know you said we could proceed with the, with the contested case in order, in one sense, to buy time. But it may not be necessary to do that, because, as my memo explains, even if we concede to the Department of State Lands right now and, and go along with what they are asking, that, that does not preclude us from seeking the proper permits either. So the idea that going forward, the contested cases would allow us to pursue this later, that is true. But so does agreeing to, you know, remove the existing items during the next work period, something along those lines. So that would also still allow us to apply for a permit in the future. I think we have a little more leverage in the contested case and doing the consent decree at that point, but it's, I'm not 100% comfortable going forward without an intention of fighting, for instance. And that's still my intent, and it's the board direction before. So that's all. If, if really the board's sense of going forward the contested case is just to buy more time, I think, I think we could get the time without, without doing that. So...
My comments, you know, I used the phrase "buy time," but my intent is, I don't think we should concede.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very good. I appreciate that.
Give them what they want, especially when we don't know the, and again, this is me speaking, not the, the other two members of this commission, but...
Yep, that's fine.
And I think we need to pursue, regardless of how this comes out, in, in the end, pursue further that we need to know from a timeline, all the players involved, what the hold points are going to be, what the estimated, more than information than we know now. Otherwise, you can concede, and it will still come back to bite you eventually. So we need to do that, I think, upfront versus, you know, be preactive on that versus reactive when all of a sudden it, "Oh, gee, it wasn't 200. Now, now it's 300. Oh, it's 400,000 or something." And that's not out of the, from what I've heard, that's not out of the question in the conversations that we've had previously.
Very good.
So I think we need to...
Okay.
And we're not guaranteed that more departments aren't going to come in and ask for more from us.
Oh, I feel they've been fairly exhausted.
I don't know, but last, that last executive session, there was a, there was another one that came in. So we went from, I believe, five to six. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't rule that out.
Well, very fine. So I don't have anything further for today. I think the board has, I think it was useful, and I appreciate the board going forward with the meeting today.
Good, good, good comments from, from some citizens up there, too.
Yep. And so what I will do is represent that we're going to continue to oppose. And I think in good faith, I can tell them that doesn't rule out talking settlement, just as we are now, just no more continuances. And we'll just get closer to a, a zero hour or an actual charter.
More information from, from these players that are, you know, claiming, including the, you know, including the, the federal agencies.
Okay.
I would, I would expect, if they feel that they have all the muscle that they can, you know, tell the county, "You'll do this and this," have, have them reduce some of that in writing. I think that could be an integral piece of the, of the timeline.
Yes.
Integral piece.
It's really hard making commitments when you don't know what's going on. Very difficult.
Further comments, Commissioner?
No, thank you.
Thanks. That's been very helpful. I appreciate moving forward.
So are you clear?
I am.
Okay, I'll, I'll let, okay.
Yep, I'm very clear on it.
Okay.
Proceed as previously directed, and I'll try also to get a further timeline and get pinned down, not just the contractors, but the agencies as well in our decision-making.
Yeah, I think, do they know? It might surprise you, too, sometimes, you know, it's a, it's a black hole, and they, they don't know sometimes. Press them, press them for that, too.
And I would get things in writing if I were you.
Okay. Or even if she wasn't you, in writing, for sure.
Well, because things just...
Oh, no.
Keep changing and...
Agreed. I agree totally. Commissioner Boyes?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you've attempted to do that, just keep applying, nudging them, a little pressure.
Yep, no, I got it.
Thank you.
I will, I've been asking for clarification and more detail.
Yeah, okay.
And timelines and sign-offs and approvals, and, and so that we know, to the, the board knows to the best degree possible, what it's actually agreeing to.
And, and that the citizens know.
Thank you. And the citizens, what it's going to cost, and what, and when we can expect it. That's all I had, Mr. Chair, other than those other two announcements.
And we will go ahead. It's 12:47. We'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you for coming.
Are we going to go into an executive session on that other matter?
No, we, right, we weren't going into it.
We continued it. Yeah, we're not going into it.
Yeah, okay.